All right, we're good.
Evening, everyone. I'd like to call this July 15th Meeting of City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Greg, Councilmember Shealy.
Aye, here.
Councilmember McBride.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell, Councilmember Brady.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory, Councilmember Waring, Councilmember Seekings.
Here.
Councilmember Tinkler, Councilmember Bowden, Councilmember Appel, Councilmember Parker, Mayor Cogswell.
Here. I'd now like to ask Councilman Waring to give the invocation and lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could we all stand, please? Eternally Father, as we come before you, we thank you, dear Mother Earth, though we abuse it, it still provides many provisions for the sustenance of your people. We pray for the leadership of this country, pray for the leadership of this state, county, and certainly this body that we are privileged to serve in front today, City of Charleston. We pray for the best of integrity and transparency as we go about delivering the business of the people. We pray for those less fortunate and help us use our abilities, small or large, to help them see better days. We pray for those in the military that defend us both near and far, them and their families. These prayers we bring forth, in your name, let us all say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any presentations or proclamations tonight, if you can believe it, but did want to let those in the audience know that might be here for the ordinance requesting a put amendment related to the 2.4 acres on Folly Road. That item has been deferred, so it will not be heard tonight. So just want to let you all know, if you're here, that item will not be taken up because it has been deferred at the request of the applicant. I also wanted to give a shout out for our new head of HR, Tammy O'Barry is in the audience here tonight. Ms. Barry, Mr. O'Barry comes to us from North Myrtle Beach where she was head of HR with that municipality, and we're excited to have her here. So if you haven't gotten to know her, meet her yet, please do so soon. Okay, we are now on to public hearings. There are five public hearings tonight, but item E5 needs to be, or is going to be deferred at the request, again, of the applicant. So let me call on Mr. Morgan to come up and present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Got some slides here for you for these. Item E1 is before you, and this is also the same site relates to item E2. This is what is going to be known as the Pioneer Alley Planned Unit Development Site. This is at 105 Cannon Street, at the, really, the corner of Cannon and Rutledge. To orient some of you who know well Charleston history, the Hominy Grill was just to the south of this corner lot here, and these are all lots that have been used more or less for parking over the last few years, and this would invite infill development that is in keeping with the character of the corner here in the Cannonboro Elliotboro neighborhood. They've been working very hard with the neighborhood to get concurrence in both of these items. The first item before you is a height change. Currently, the height in this location is the two and a half to three-story old city district, and they'd like to move to the three and a half old city district. And again, that would apply to all these parcels that are in the corner and identified here. And here's just an aerial of the site. Again, you can see how they are currently parking areas, with the exception of one building that does front of Cannon, and this would be at the rear of that property there. And in our comprehensive plan, it's designated for neighborhood. And this, this is the second item that also relates to the site, and this is for the actual adoption of a planned unit development for the site. And this would be a mixed-use planned unit development that would involve 25 residential and short-term rental units in this location, as well as up to 5,000 square feet of commercial space, particularly up at the corner in that corner lot and a multi-story, three-story or three-and-a-half-story building there. There are, again, the same image of the aerial here and from the comprehensive plan, and then we have, this is the overall land use document from the comprehensive plan with the mixed use up at the corner, and then the variety of residential in the orange area and then the pure residential in the yellow. As you head over towards Ashley Avenue, there would be a vehicular and pedestrian connection over towards Ashley Avenue, so it would be well-connected within the neighborhood here. And again, they've worked very hard with the surrounding neighbors on what the particulars would be of this planned unit development. And here is an overall layout of the planned unit development that gives the number of units, and I can go into this in more detail if you all have questions, but it's the different types of units with the larger building in the corner, which would be a kind of architecturally significant building there on that corner as well. And then the next item is item E3. This is an amendment to our SR6 district, and it also corrects a Scrivener's error. As we went in to make this affordable housing amendment, we did notice a Scrivener's error in there, so we're correcting that in reference to that, but you all have the chart in your pack. Change in the SR6 district, which is not super common throughout the city. It would change the overall lot width from a minimum of 35 to 27. It would change the overall lot minimum square footage from 4,000 square feet to 2,700, and then the setbacks would, on the side, would change from four and a half to three and a half on the southern and western side, and from four feet to three feet on the northern and eastern sides, and lot occupancy from 50% to 65%, all in the name of trying to achieve more affordable housing in these locations. I think in general, the main areas that we noticed the SR6 were areas in West Ashley. And again, you have the ordinance in front of you in your package. Would be happy to answer any other questions you all might have about that. And then we have, there's the actual ordinance right there that I'm reading from, and then we have E4 is a recent annexation and a zoning at 1812 Devonshire Drive, and this would come in the city as SR1. And then E5 is, has been deferred at the request of the applicant. That's this one here. Be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We now are on to the public hearing. How many, Madam Clerk, how many people do we have signed up to speak?
We have three.
All right, so we'll give a minute and a half to remind everybody who's here to speak tonight, either at public hearing or later on. The rules of decorum apply. We ask you to remain respectful. We ask you that you don't address any council members directly. This is not a question and answer. We're here to have your voices heard. Again, please be respectful. If you are not, I will give you one warning. I'll give you a second. You're going to be removed from council chambers. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first speaker?
Anthony G. Bryant.
Anthony G. Bryant, President, AG Bryant Group, Inc., former president of the Garden Hill Neighborhood Association, NY. And when you come before this body to be in opposition to applications, this is, this is general decorum and rules, you should be respected as a human being. If you oppose every last one here, the police department should be knocking on your door based on a third party in Georgia undermining the life of my own mother who owns Cortland Avenue, interfering in her medical care, interfering in her medical care where her son comes before this body against the police, against other people, and my mother, former PoliRope Hospital, had to be left, left rehab at 101 temperature, right? Low, low blood pressure and could have died going to emergency room because her son, because her son, that's why. So it'd be on my conscience of being in this room that my, her second son would put her in danger based upon his opposition to people with money and power in Charleston. And she is not a political football for nobody. That is my mama. So I want to be clear when you come in this room that there are interests and going concerns in this city, hedge funds, all kind of big money here that will look into your life and take your mama out.
Mohammed Idris.
Thank you, Kylie. Evening. I have in front of me here a picture of Mayor Cogswell and myself. Mayor Cogswell told me on January the 8th, Mohammed, I know you are going to keep me in line. Before that, before this took place, when he was running for campaign, I told him I would help him, and he said he could help me, but I haven't received the help yet. When I went to him, he told me that the city council in charge of that, I should see the city council. So I look around and I see Councilman Seeking. He's been here longer than anybody I know other than Gregory and Waring. Everybody else had left. Mitchell had left and come back. But I think that Seeking is the boss of the city council. So I'm gonna come before the council today and ask for help. The mayor said come and see the council, so I'll be dealing with the council for the rest of this until I solve this problem. I told the mayor I would fight him, and I'm going to fight him until I receive what he promised me. Peace be unto you all.
Todd Richardson.
Good evening. My name is Todd Richardson. I'm the applicant for items one and two tonight. I just wanted to get on the record and thank everyone. We've been working on Pioneer Alley for over two years. That's been a great effort, working with Councilman Gregory, Councilman Mitchell, with the Cannonboro Elliotboro Neighborhood Association, all of our adjacent neighbors, and we're really proud of the project. We're proud to be able to bring 20% of our units to be workforce housing. We're proud to bring much-needed neighborhood commercial and to contribute positively to the Cannonboro Elliotboro District. So I'll be available if you have any questions, but I just wanted to thank everyone involved in getting us here tonight. Thank you very much.
And was there anyone else who needed to speak during public hearings? We have two. Yes, ma'am? And if we can also get your name for the record.
Good evening. I the Queen Quet Head from the body of the Gullah Geechee Nation, glad to be here this evening. I came all the way from St. Helens Island because I had an email to say my proclamation for Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week would be presented at 5 o'clock tonight. So I was very shocked to find out it was not on the agenda. So I didn't want to leave out the building and head back two hours, then potential rain, dry long so. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to at least announce that we want to say thank you, thank you to the County of Charleston, the City of Charleston for celebrating for 25 years with the Gullah Geechee Nation, because Gullah Geechee culture was started right here, anything like that, especially upon this peninsula in this county. And so we hope and pray, we don't know what happened this evening, clerical error or whatever, but we hope that the City of Charleston will still be issuing their annual proclamation and celebration of Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. And this is only my second time being in this chamber on behalf of the Gullah Geechee Nation in 25 years. And so we will launch that celebration on July 26th. It goes all the way through to August the 2nd. And so you all can follow us online. I have flyers. I'll leave some out there on the table. But this is my first opportunity to meet the new mayor, and I'm glad to meet you, sir, on behalf of the Gullah Geechee Nation. But I hope that someone will let us know what exactly happened, because it definitely, I have it everything in emails that said, come tonight, 5 o'clock, to receive the proclamation. So I don't know what happened, but I hope that somebody gets that clerical error straight, and y'all can mail the proclamation to me or come down to 2 hours next Saturday, July 26th at noon, and meet me at Penn Center when we launch the celebration. All of y'all can come, because I know y'all know the way down there. Okay. And so definitely, city council, mayor, thank y'all very much for giving me an opportunity to address you. Peace and blessings.
Was there anyone else who needed to speak during public hearings? All right, Mayor, that's all we have.
Well, thank you, ma'am, and we will get into that clerical error. Apologize for you coming all this way, and certainly do support your organization and celebration of the Gullah Geechee culture. So apologies for that, and we will get you a proclamation shortly.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would ask, now that it comes to council, unanimous consent, and take items one through five together and move for their approval.
I'd like to take item two out of that.
I'd like to take item two, two out of that, because I'd like to offer an amendment to it.
Okay, so why don't we move forward then with?
Items one, three, four, and five, I would ask unanimous consent and move for their approval.
Five is deferred.
Oh, five was deferred, yeah, sorry. Okay, so items one, three, four, item five is deferred. I ask unanimous consent to take one, three, and four together and move their approval.
We have motion made for, okay, motion made, property seconded. Before we vote, I would like to just say for the applicant on items one and two, do want to thank you for the process that you've been through and for being good stewards of that property. But with that, I'll turn it over to, no, we got to vote on that one, right? So move for approval. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Now we are on to item two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment. Most of you have on your desk the Pioneer Alley information, and on the front, you can see this beautiful architecture. And the amendment that I'm going to offer, you should also have a copy of that on your desk. It's really amending Appendix 7, and it's 7A, the Architectural Guidelines. I would like to add to the Architectural Guidelines, and you should have a single sheet on your, and it's the, I would like to add the Architectural Review Board. You should see that on that sheet, along with some other information, because it's very important to us, and when I say us, I mean District 6, and I mean the Neighborhood Association, that we protect this design. This design is sort of a bookend to the neighborhood, and what this amendment would do would give the Neighborhood Association, just in case this is sold to someone else, okay, that we would have the ability to at least make recommendations to keep this architectural design in place. So my amendment is to include as a part of Appendix 7, under Architectural Guidelines, the, because you would have the Architectural Guidelines in one sheet already there, but I'd like to add to that the Pioneer Architectural Guidelines and ARB. And that deals with the Architectural Review Board, as well as making sure that if Mr. Ramus, who is currently the architect, is no longer available, that the Neighborhood Association would appoint a successor, and along with the other members of the team, which includes Andrew Gold, Vince Graham, and Steve Ramus right now. But if the architecture leaves, we want the Neighborhood Association to have some say-so in who would take that place so that we can protect the design. Did I say too much, Joe?
So for clarity, for items, the, the.
Only item two.
Only item two, the individual, Mr. Ramus, the develop, from the development team.
Right.
Or such designee that would be approved of by the board.
Correct.
And that would be approved up by the board.
Correct. But, but if you, if you, on your desk, you should have a single sheet, and what we're adding is the side that says Architectural Review Board as an amendment to the guidelines.
Okay.
That's my motion, yes.
Motion made, property seconded. Any further discussion on this? Councilman Bowden?
So, I guess, so, so the effect of an amendment along these lines would be that before they make any changes to plans that have been presented to someone, that, well, I thought this is saying that it would have to go to this body before the BAR.
It'll go right, so that this body would be able to make some recommendations to try to make sure that we keep this architectural design intact. But the ultimate decision, of course, is the BAR.
Okay. I guess I'm just having trouble thinking through, like, what the process would be if they wanted to have any more changes before.
Councilman Appel?
Um, it's on here. In the event that Mr. Ramus can no longer serve, either the developer, the TBD, shall appoint another South Carolina Registered Architect to serve as his successor. Respectively, Sina shall appoint successors for Monsieur Gold and Graham should they not be able to continue in their role.
So the amendment is this paragraph, yeah, correct.
This page.
We have a motion made, property seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As amended?
Nay.
Nay? Ayes have it.
There's one nay for the record, Councilmember Brady.
Yes, and I'd just like, under the rules, to explain, I just don't like getting things at the last minute, and if this needed to go back to committee, that could have always been something, but just asking us to read a sheet of paper and then vote on it, I would prefer that that not be the standard going for it. Thank you.
Okay, now we are on to approval of council minutes. Motion properly seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Ayes have it. We are now on to citizens' participation period. Again, for those of you that are here to speak, remember the rules of decorum that was discussed previously. Madam Clerk, how many people do we have signed up to speak?
We have seven people signed up.
All right, give another minute and a half. Thank you.
All right, Anthony Bryant. Former councilmember, oh, never mind.
I believe. Can I get this up a little bit? I can't, I can't. And those are, I'd move the death penalty, too. What, what, what I'm, what I'm here for, I don't see, I don't see humor at all in Charleston, for me. When, when, when a, when a police chief comes to your door, your daddy house he bought and used two years old and tell you a horrible person, I don't see nothing funny about nobody in here. Okay, none of you are funny to me. Okay, you, you didn't, you, you come to my door, and I'm against Union Pair and everything in this city, and you come to my door, and you pay people to come to my door to humiliate my mother. That's what you paid for, to humiliate me. I don't see nothing funny in here. Some of you weren't even born in Charleston. Some of you too young to know Charleston. You martyr. You martyr. Jews own black folk. You martyr. When you martyr, that's what happens. You attack the wrong person. Now take these documents and give it to the mayor. There no slave here. I want to thank these four firefighters in Charleston who saved my mother's life. Three EMTs from Charleston EMS who took her to the hospital ringing like crazy, her son worrying about her dying.
Time.
Have a nice evening.
Former councilmember Bill Moody.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Madam Clerk, former affiliate associates, I guess I should, should say. It's good to be back and be with everyone. I'm here tonight to speak about honoring one of my constituents and a citizen, Peggy Bone, for her 50-year service to the city. I moved into the city in 1968, and a lot of things have changed. But one of the things, or a few of the things that haven't changed, was the excellent leadership and management of the tennis center. And that's really due to Peggy's leadership. In my younger days, I used to spend a lot of time in the evenings over there playing tennis, as did my kids and my grandkids. I was talking with a couple of them tonight before I came here about Peggy. I observed a few things over the years. I just want to check them off. The facility was always clean. The grass was always cut, even the greenway. I mean, her people would go out and cut around the greenway. When you're going down the greenway, you knew you were at the tennis court because it was always cut around. The palmetto trees were neat. The fronds were not dead. The berries were not messing up the ground. They were cleaned up. The lights were always lit. If one burnt out, it was replaced very quickly. The staff was always polite and helpful, and there were a lot of signs around announcing tennis tournaments for the city, or the state, or the region, so it was a very active place. And probably one of the most important, it was always a safe place to drop off your kids.
Time.
Wait, Mr. Mayor, I think we got a point of privilege. I think, come on back to the microphone.
Well, I've got through all of them, really. It's just, it was a safe place to drop off your kids, and this doesn't happen by just chance. Her leadership has been unquestionable, and just to have 50 years working for the city is incredible, because she's been active in the Boilin' community. And I was going to show this picture, let everybody look at this picture. This is really her early leadership, and I could leave this with you. But this is Ms. Bone, Peggy Bone. It says Peggy Bone leads the petite ballerinas. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it, and I hope you consider playing tennis at the Peggy Bone.
Tyler Smith. All right, Zach Bessidi.
Just, again, three things in relation to the pedicab contract. You guys are currently bidding out storm debris removal. Guys have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars. Storm debris contract is for two years, and they bid on it frequently because that is good for the city. It creates revenue. Right now, the pedicab contractors are paying you $8,344.40 for one, $9,389.75 that's bike taxi, and pedicab pays you $8,133.38. And I can tell you, the big reason, I'm going to try and pay you more. That's all. Hold a bid. I'm going to try and pay you more, and by having us in actual competition, they're also going to try and pay you more. They're here presenting a unified front to say, renew the contract and don't hold a bid. Just let them pay you more. That's the best way that they can beat me, is by raising their bids and paying you guys more. That's the only threat I'm actually presented. I've come. I've come here for years trying to pay you, five months in February when you approved this bid, and you still won't let me pay you. What's going on? We just want to pay you and try and operate a business, and you don't have to be in control of everything, you have all of the cards and you are the casino, you can just take a regulatory framework, you have control that way. If this is too tiresome, get rid of the contracting that you're doing-
Time.
And just control it through regulatory frameworks. Thank you.
John Baker.
Good afternoon, good evening, John Baker, Charleston Firefighters Association Local 61, first and foremost, cancer in the fire service is more relevant today than ever. One of the big budget items that Chief Curia has asked for over the last two years and continuing is to be cancer screenings. This past month, we were able to invite United Diagnostic Services out to Charleston in order to screen as many members as possible. We had 67 participants, including the mayor and some of Chief Curia's staff, which I'm greatly thankful for. Just wanted to update you a little bit on what we found. One firefighter confirmed thyroid cancer, just by this one simple screening, that ultrasounds from your chin down to your lower area. One firefighter with confirmed cancer. That's only 67 people out of the over 400 members that we have. This person is young, this person is healthy, this person doesn't have maybe a BMI of 10% on him, I mean, he is in shape, doesn't smoke, doesn't drink, but what we're exposed to is so nasty, and this is what's causing a lot of issues in the fire service when it comes to cancer. I am super grateful that we had this company come out, because if we save this one person from a heartache of misery or death, it was well worth it. I stand with Chief Curia when it comes to his budget item request of cancer screenings, and I will fight tooth and nail with him for it. And I know, Mayor, I appreciate you for coming out to see firsthand just what it takes to have a simple test done, that's gonna potentially save the lives of many of our members. We also have people getting further screenings as well.
Mohammed Idris.
You know, when you look at the word vote and riot, they come to 62. Vote is 62, pardon me, vote is 62 if you put a number by it, each letter, and riot is the same thing. So you vote to stop the rioting. I want to thank Councilman Gregory, he did a wonderful job by bringing the television in there. Waring, Councilman Waring, did a wonderful job. In his district, did a wonderful job, and they're growing like I don't know what. Look like whoever's supposed to, who voted for them are very happy. And Seeking, he is Seeking, you see his name, C-King, and he is the king of this council. Take it to the bank. So I will be dealing with these three, because they look like they know what they are doing, and they get the job done. However, I voted for the mayor, his name is Cogswell, they're saying the cause is well, but it hasn't been well to me, so I'm gonna be working to get what I voted for from the mayor. Thank you all.
James Murphy. All right, and was there anyone that I missed who had signed up? All right, those were all the speakers that we had, we did receive some comments online. We received 24 comments requesting that the process for the assignment and bidding for pedicabs be transparent and open to free market competition. One comment was received from Megan Blyzner in favor of rezoning a portion of folly road to pud classification in the hope that it would become community space. 51 comments were received in opposition to rezoning a portion of folly road to pud classification. One comment was received from Eric Baker, who said that all of James Island should be either within the city of Charleston or the town of James Island, because James Island was losing consistency of zones and becoming a big conglomerate of mismatched layerings. One comment was received from Amy Given in opposition to the annexation of Zero Folly Road. One phone call was received from Maria Lund expressing her outrage with the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement, and requesting that City Council encourage police not to work with ICE, and that becoming a sanctuary city would be a good way to handle it. Three comments were received from Anthony Bryant, which were sent to council in full, and those are all the comments that we received.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're now on to petitions and communications, there are several appointments. We've got municipal court, code enforcement officers, building code, board of appeals.
Move for approval on all.
We have a motion made for approval on all, have a second?
Second.
Motion made, probably seconded, any further discussion on these appointments? Appreciate these folks willing to serve. If none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes have it. And no council?
We just reappointed our administrative judge of the municipal court, and I believe that her honor is here.
Oh, she is.
The baby would at least recognize her.
Yeah, let's give her a round of applause, thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Councilman Seekings, for pointing that out, apologies I missed that. And did want to give a shout out, we actually have two former city council members in the audience with us, Mr. James Lewis, thank you for being here tonight, and Mr. Moody, of course, as well. All right, we have no council communications, no consent agenda items, we are now on to committee reports, so call on Councilwoman Parker for committee on rec.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything was for informational purposes only, we have a lot of great things, very detailed report came from Mr. Cronberg, all of, a lot of maintenance, a lot of updates on our Johns Island and W L parks that are being built. The only thing that we need to vote on is the request made by Councilmember Keith Waring is to name the Charleston Tennis Center on Farmfield Ave, the city of Charleston Peggy Bone Tennis Center. We heard a few comments tonight, I certainly do not, I would not be able to do justice here by speaking on her service here, I would like you to do that, Councilmember Waring, but if it came out of committee, and I would ask that we move for approval.
So we have motion made, probably seconded, Mr. Waring, would you like to say a few words? We have a lot of people just put their mics on, sorry.
I think I'll let some of my colleagues go first.
Well, I guess I'd point out that Ms. Bone was in District 11, now she's been redistricted into District 9, so I, I, as someone who grew up playing tennis at Farmfield and knowing Ms. Bone since my youth, I'm honored to support this action, and I wish she was here to see as well, but, oh, she is, okay, oh, she didn't bat, okay. Well, I'll go say hello after this, but I think it's a great thing that we're doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, on something like this, sometimes there's a lot of hands in getting us to where we are, and I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to legendary broadcaster, Bill Sharp, here today. Bill reached out to me a couple months ago with the same idea of naming the tennis center after Ms. Bone, and I think that this kind of came from a multitude of different angles, which just shows how much of a no-brainer it is. When you outlast Mayor Riley in terms of, in terms of years of service to the city of Charleston, that should not go unrecognized, and so I'm fully supportive of this, I want to thank Bill for bringing it forward, I want to thank everybody who's played a part in it, and especially Ms. Bone, and look forward to, you know, going by the greenway and seeing the tennis center with a new name on it, so it's gonna be exciting, thank you.
Councilman Shealy.
All right, thank you, Mayor Cogswell. Yeah, I guess Peggy Bone started working at the tennis center when I was probably about seven or eight years old, so it's been about 50 years, and it's been hundreds of my friends and their kids, and I grew up with the Moody kids, so I saw them go through that program. I think of a lot of kids that are very, very successful today, I think that a lot of that is because of the care and the guidance that Ms. Bone gave to them. I think of people like Angelo Anastopoulos, who's now coaching at College of Charleston, and is an influence on a lot of people, and my good friend Jeff Vick, that grew up in that program and also kind of gave back to that. You know, back in the 90s, I was Assistant Athletic Director at Charleston Southern University, and was asked to host the Big South Conference Tournament, and I had no business doing that, but Division One tennis tournament, but Peggy Bone took that over and did a fantastic job and made the city of Charleston very, very proud in the way she handled all these Division One athletes and ran that, and, you know, I came to a tennis tournament one time, it was a young girl from Columbia that had an official step in because she had to go to the bathroom, and that official was going to, that official was gonna disqualify her, and Ms. Bone stepped in and said, listen, she's gonna finish this tournament, we'll discuss this situation later, but we're gonna, and certainly comforted that, that family in the way she handled it, and that's gonna be, that young lady is gonna be very successful, she's in, you know, in higher level education right now, and is gonna be an extreme success, but it's because of all the ways that Peggy Bone has touched West Ashley and the city of Charleston throughout multiple generations, those kids that I'm talking about have kids in that program now, and some, like Mr. Moody was saying, some have grandchildren now that are playing in that program, and I can't think of a better person to name our tennis center from after than Peggy Bone, thank you.
Shealy now, Councilman Waring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, earlier, I had the privilege of praying before this body, and one of the things I spoke about and asked for and prayed for was for us to bring the best of our intellect, integrity, and transparency. When a person works on behalf of the city, the better part of 50 years, they're not doing it just for the pay. We're blessed in this city to have, oftentimes, we pray for you and the staff and the people around this table to do the right thing, but when we pray for the staff, it's just not the staff that are seated in the room. We are blessed to have so many good people that go above and beyond pay scales to make this city one of the finest places to live in America. And when it comes to family, there's nothing that unbores you more than when somebody treats your child right. Somebody cares for your child, and more importantly, that child never forgets being treated kind. And that's what Ms. Bone went above and beyond for. Is she a strong-willed person? I don't think, without a doubt. As a matter of fact, I think both bills that came on her behalf today, Councilmember Moody as well as Bill Sharp, they're not too hard to get, too old to get whacked upside the head, she may even do that to them today, but she's a gracious lady that made, along with the staff, our tennis program one of the best in America. I think we were over at Daniel Island a couple of months ago, and the tennis program was nationally recognized, and frankly, I actually thought of Ms. Bone when those people were lined up behind us, proud to take pictures for the recognition, well deserved, but think of the hundreds, if not thousands, of children. They have good feelings about this city because they came up through our recreational program, and particularly the tennis program. So, and one of the things I chatted with Council Lady Parker about in the lead up to the meeting, her recreation meeting that she chairs, and thank you for allowing this to be placed on your agenda, was think of how many things we have in this city that's named after men, and think about how many things in this city that we have named after women. It's a privilege on behalf of all of us, and I tell you, that's one reason I love to sit back and hear my colleagues talk. It's great hearing y'all talk on her behalf, certainly well-deserving. You don't replace Ms. Peggy Bone after almost 50 years, you just thank God she came our way and she was in our community, so thanks to you, Mr. Mayor, thanks to you, Madam Chair, and all colleagues on council, as we hopefully cast a vote and name this tennis center and honor Ms. Peggy Bone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Waring, and thank you, Ms. Bone, for all of your hard work and dedication on and off the court, and all of your service to the city of Charleston. So, we have a motion made, properly seconded, all those in favor renaming the tennis center, please say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Congratulations, it's exciting.
Yeah, Ms. Bone, we'd love you to come up.
Right, right.
I just want to thank all of y'all. I had a wonderful, happy career with the city, and I loved that y'all were all talking about the children, because we just don't talk about them that much, and it was so, it was one of my favorite things about my job, was to see the twinkle in the children's eye when they won a trophy, or when they come bouncing, came bouncing in the door, and I hope that we will continue to do things for children, and I'd like, I want the Charleston Tennis Center to continue to be a haven for the children of our community. Thank you so much, thank you, Bill Sharp, for what you did. Thank you, Billy Silcox, back here, who was the first pro at the Charleston Tennis Center.
A lot of Billys.
Thank you, Bill. James Beck, who wrote, thank you for James, he wrote for the Post and Courier, the tennis column, and his daughter Danielle worked for the city as, through high school, and she's now a local lawyer here in town. So I just want to thank, thank all of y'all, it's such a great honor, and I look forward to more success at the Charleston Tennis Center.
Thank you. Absolutely. All right, we are now moving on to committee on public safety, call on Councilmember Shealy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. The committee on public safety met on July 8th at 4:00 P.M. We had a police department approval, law enforcement assistant and supports agreement with the York County Sheriff's Office, we had two grants for the police department with no match, the fire department had an approval to enter into a M O U with Charleston County EMS, and we also have two ordinances that were on the agenda. One, the watercraft bill, let me, let's see, let's start, let's see, in order here. We had an ordinance first to amend Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Charleston to modernize the city's animal control regulations, and then we have a watercraft bill that kind of simplified the current watercraft ordinances, Section 21-67 through 21-73, and updates it to conform to the new state law, which prohibits abandoned, derelict, and sunken vessels. It amended Section 22-7, mooring or landing boat along seawall to bring watercraft language into conformity with the watercraft ordinance, and it amended Section 22-8, mooring or landing boat along public dock to bring watercraft language into conformity with the watercraft ordinance, prohibit mooring within 500 feet of a public dock at any time the city is under a state of emergency from a named storm. So, we have two bills up for reading, and Madam Clerk, we vote, we need to make a first reading on those, I believe, would you please read the title of both those bills, please?
Yes, so the first is an ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Charleston, South Carolina, to modernize the city's animal control regulations as amended at the public safety meeting. An ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 21, Article 3, Division 4, Sections 21-67 through 21-74. Sections 21-67 through 21-74, and to amend Chapter 22, Article 1, Sections 22-7 and 22-8 of the Code of the City of Charleston to conform with state law.
Mayor Cogswell, that completes my report.
Thank you. I'd like to, Madam Clerk, if we could call for a roll-call vote on both of the ordinance.
Yes, sir, and we need to get a motion.
I would move that we take these separately just for the sake of ensuring proper protocol. So I would, I'd move for approval on Item 1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the Code of the City of Charleston, South Carolina, to modernize the city's animal control regulations as amended.
We have a motion made for E. We have a motion made, probably seconded. On this one, we'll just do voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, ayes, have it.
And that is a, that is giving a first reading to those ordinance.
That's correct. And then I would move for first reading of Item 2, which is an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 21, Article 3, Division 4, Sections 21 through 67 through 21-74, and to amend Chapter 22, Article 1, Sections 22-7 and 22-8 of the Code of the City of Charleston, conform with state law. And I would ask for a roll-call vote if it is seconded.
A motion made, probably seconded. Madam Clerk, roll-call vote on this item.
All right, Councilmember Gregg is absent. Councilmember Shealy?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride? Councilmember Mitchell? Councilmember Brady? Councilmember Gregory? Councilmember Waring? Councilmember Seekings? Councilmember Tinkler? Councilmember Bowden?
Aye.
Councilmember Appel?
Aye.
Councilmember Parker?
Aye.
Mayor Cogswell?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And we need to vote on the other item, too, under traffic, I mean, under public safety. There needs to be a motion and a second.
Motion for approval on the other item on this?
Absolutely.
A motion made, probably seconded. Who was the second? Councilwoman Shealy. A motion made, probably seconded, on the other items on this committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, ayes, have it.
Mr. Mayor, if I just could, now that we've given first reading to the animal control regulations, I did want to commend Animal Control Supervisor Courtney Bales and thank her for her hard work, as well as Ms. Copeland and the other animal care organizations that also, after public safety, got to weigh in on this, and I hope that dialogue will continue as we move towards second readings. We do have a month here for other folks to weigh in, and this has been a long time coming. And again, I want to thank Animal Control Supervisor Bales for her hard work on this because it's been years, years in the making on this, and so thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. We are now on to Committee on Community Development. I'd like to call on Councilmember Mitchell for the report.
Can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
Committee on Community Development met on June 18 at 3:00 p.m., and we had two items on there under New Business. One was certifying one building, site as abandoned building, and that was voted on and approved unanimously. And then we had a presentation and potential action regarding proposed changes to the condition use of portable housing, demonstration standard of SRA 6. And I think you heard that through the Ways and Means a few minutes ago. So those are the two items that we have had on the agenda and are due for approval of the information coming from the Community Development Committee.
A motion made, probably seconded, on this report. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, ayes, have it. Now I'd like to call on Councilman Waring for Public Works. A motion made, probably seconded. Discussion.
There's a couple of discussions there that I'd like to give. Obviously, we had a good report, but we had an award that was given on a drainage project where people have been flooding for decades. And they were flooding for decades, not so much due to sea level rise, which I'm pretty sure we all believe, and I know I do. But it was because the ditch wasn't big enough, it wasn't wide enough, and the water couldn't get out fast enough. We could have low tide, and these people would still flood. Well, it's a project that worked on, was worked on for years, the funding. Actually, Councilman Gray, we worked on it along with my father on Phase 1. My first vote on council was to vote the dollars to pay for Phase 1 of the Forest Park Drainage Project. Obviously, we got, I had a good chance, and along with colleagues, to work on Phase 2. And that Phase 2 got done pretty much on time and pretty much on budget. And before the project was finished, neighbors were raving about when heavy rains would come, they wouldn't flood anymore, even though they had to go through detours and had back fences taken down and certainly inconvenience would probably be put into Miley. They were thankful that when heavy rains come, they didn't have to pray for it not to come into their homes. That project was awarded nationally, and I think Councilman, Councilman, you're almost a Councilman. Mr. Fountain should come to the microphone and, yeah, come on up. And let me tell you, these drainage projects, in particular, that go into these established neighborhoods that were built prior to stormwater policies being put in place, now we're coming back and making the corrections, and it matters. It matters to the quality of life when you don't have to worry about water coming into your home. So describe the award that this city was able to get as a result of this project.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sherman. So the Forest Acres Phase 2 project was awarded the State of South Carolina's American Public Works Association Project of the Year for the Environment category. It's a model for the sustainable approach for stormwater management. We removed a pump station as part of Phase 1 with the work from Phase 2, of course, provided gravity drainage to the very large drainage basin through the Forest Acres, the apartment complexes, Playground Road, and then the downstream improvements from the bikeway, which was the Phase 1 of the project. It's a great example, I think, of a project that did more than one thing, where we were able to do the West Ashley Bike Way improvements as part of Phase 1, and then bring the drainage component through Phase 2 and added new sidewalks to Playground Road, improved the drainage along Playground Road, again, trying to make the city a better place.
That certainly deserves praises and salutations on behalf of Stormwater Department and Mr. Fountain and his team. Now, the second thing that happened at yesterday's meeting, Councilwoman Parker requested this, was an update in particular on the small projects. Now, there were, I believe, 27 of them. 27 projects across this city, and probably in some of the most diverse way. There's not a councilperson, I don't believe, anyway, and I'm only looking at Councilman Boy Greg because, you know, they have everything over there at Daniel Island. They may not have a drainage problem over there. But anyway, that being the exception. Every councilperson in this, seated around here, including the mayor, there are small projects, drainage projects, that's making big impacts in areas where, quite frankly, years ago, we would have a tug-of-war. You're getting money in your district, and you're not getting money in yours, Councilman Brady. Or you're not getting money in yours, Councilman Shealy, and Councilman Tinkler is getting all the money and projects done. We are not there today. We are moving forward in such a broad way and carrying communities with us. And those small projects, four years ago, Mr. Mayor, we didn't have that. It was Mr. Fountain that came up with the idea. I think we started out with half a million dollars. And then it was now increased to a million. And hopefully, we're going to be able to carry it up to 1.5 million. And you say, oh, you know, we got drainage projects in the hundreds of millions of dollars. That's true. But in these established neighborhoods that were built in the 60s and 70s, in some cases, the 80s, that did not have stormwater guidelines and built in low-lying areas. When these, a canal is open up, or a ditch is widened, or a 15-inch pipe is changed to a 48-inch pipe, it drains off. Again, and it matters. So we don't have a suggestion box, but we should. But that, those 27 projects, it doesn't count the projects that have already been accomplished in most cases with most of us seated here. So when you don't have communities tugging at one another, or you don't have a councilmember tugging at one another because, you know, you're getting all the speed bumps and I'm not, you're getting all the ditches clean and I'm not, we are now to the point that where we are moving forward in a broad way. And I can't tell you how much I thank the mayor, Mr. Fountain, his team, our staff, and councilmembers, because I don't think when we call now to get things done, and don't get me wrong now, as I said, these projects started four years ago. There's been a transition from the previous generation to now here. And we would get red tape cut out the way. Mr. Keen has been a great find, Mr. Mayor, bringing them back from Atlanta. Red tape is being cut, projects is being moved. On this agenda, we appropriate $100,000 to three engineering firms to help move projects off of people's desks, back to the private sector so they can get completed, built and completed. And I'm telling you, it's making a difference. So that needs to be recognized. Thank the mayor, his team, his staff. Thank Mr. Fountain. Thank Mr. Keen for the job that they're doing on a daily basis, and it's beginning to be ordinary. So I think that was worth the additional time that you allotted today.
You can keep going. You can keep going.
But obviously, move approval for the report. I think somebody's already done that.
A motion made, probably seconded, great words and great effort by staff, and I echo your comments. And so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, ayes, have it. We're now on to Councilmember Seekings for TNT. A motion made, probably seconded. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be very brief. We had some great updates today, which y'all ought to sort of look at on the low line, which we've been talking about, the Asser River Crossing. There was a request made that we approve in advance, the request back to SC DOT to take back portions of Romney Street, Cypress Street, and UG Street to allow for building of crosswalks on an accelerated basis if we can't do it through the SC DOT process. And we approved that unanimously. We had an appeal that was withdrawn today from a chauffeur's license. We got a long report on the safe streets and roads for all UST grants. There's a lot of work to be done to make our streets safer. That's coming. Lastly, for y'all's information, we got an update and had a discussion about the Maybank Highway-Riverland Road intersection and sort of just that corridor. We were joined by Councilmember Boykin from County Council, who is very easy to identify with his cowboy hat on, which he had on. And the upshot of that is that's clearly a corridor that needs a lot of work and cooperation. And I think the other part of that conversation, and Councilmember McBride, thank you for bringing this forward, is not only that corridor, but there are plenty of other places in the city and the county that need some attention, and the best way to get that attention is to do it collaboratively. And so I think having Councilmember Boykin here, being part of that discussion, was very positive. So we also approved two certificates of convenience and necessity which need a vote. We also met on May 27. Despite the fact that we finally unanimously, and through the hard work of our legal counsel, and particularly Ms. Crewthurds, voted to amend the pedicab ordinance, there has been a motion or a request that we defer just the portion of the ordinance that talks to the particulars of how it works, not putting the other tokens forward. And so I've moved that to be deferred and acceptance of the rest of the report.
So we have motion made with the deferral. Did want to just add one additional comment, and I'll come to other councilmembers for discussion relating to the collaboration with the county. Want to give a shout-out to the county and Councilmember McBride. We've been working with them, with the county staff, their staff, our staff, on collaborative efforts on John's Island, the widening of Maybank that we've talked a little bit about here. Tomorrow, we have a meeting to discuss, among other things, this intersection, the pitchfork on John's Island, so we can hopefully be unified in a presentation or plan to go to DOT for approval. And I'm optimistic that we will come up with or agree upon some paths forward that don't require tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars, but could be relatively easy fixes. So we'll see how that goes. Certainly, anybody, any councilmember that wants to come to those meetings, they're quarterly, more than welcome to attend. We're happy to circulate the date and time on those to everybody. And so Councilmember Seeking?
One other item I forgot, Mr. Mayor, and I don't want to miss it because it was an excellent presentation through some hard work of Mr. Martin and his team. We also approved through Ways and Means today, but it was unanimously recommended through TNT, the design and construction of parking lots along the corridor for the low line. And what he has done is he has taken funds that we'd already set aside for one and has figured out a way for about a third of the cost of that one to get these three lots and about 120 spaces in place as the low line sort of comes out of the ground or comes to fruition. So, and again, I think we approved, I don't think we approved those Ways and Means, which, once we get through this, we'll do it again.
Different streams of revenue.
That is correct.
All right, Councilman Brady?
Yes, I just had, just a point of clarification. So Councilmember Seekings, are you saying the 60 cows move forward, and then the deferral is just on the renewal period? I just want to make sure, just for clarification. Okay.
Councilman Mitch?
I just want to mention, so far as the low lines are concerned, the low line is really in District 4, from Mont Pleasant Street all the way down to Columbus Street, if you may. Just want to make sure that we informed the North Central Neighborhood Association exactly what's going to be taking place, because we are talking about that over and over again in the meeting. So just make sure that we can inform them, let them know, so we wouldn't have any hiccups along the way, if you may. So this is what I'm saying.
And I think we can answer that. North Central has not only been well-informed, they've been actively participating. And when we had the kickoff for the low line, there was about 250 people there, including, and North Central team was there as well. And by the way, I didn't point this out, but we approved either in April or May funding to complete drawings for the low line. They're complete. They're ready to go. So it is moving quickly, and I think that there has been an extraordinary amount of information out there and participation, and we'll certainly make sure that it stays that way.
Right.
Particularly because this does bisect your district, and it's going to have huge benefits.
Yeah, because we want to make sure that even in those streets like Popular Street, Romney Street, all these streets, to make sure we're going to have a gate-hobby to get in and out those streets so people wouldn't be going through with any cars. So all these things, we want to make sure that they inform of this, what's happening, taking that way, and HF and I Street, when we get up in that particular area, we're going to make some changes there. And I have to get back to finding exactly what's going to happen to the low line housing. And so that was on hold for a while because of contamination or whatever we get the word for that. So we want to make sure that.
That's on hold right now because they're trying to get MyTech funding. Right, yeah.
So we want to get all these things done so we can, just everything can move smoothly, smoothly down the path.
And just finally, Mr. Mayor, and improving the cross-street intersections. And one of the things that was very interesting as we were talking about this, UG Street, its average daily traffic count is 7,500 cars a day. So this project is going to go a long way to improving the condition of UG Street and making it a much better, much more efficient, and less flooded corridor that people on the north end of the peninsula use to get in and out. So there's a lot of really great things going on along that corridor.
Good stuff. Again, motion made, is amended, properly seconded. Any further discussion on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, ayes, have it. Now back to you, Councilman Seekings for Ways and Means.
As amended in the Real Estate Committee by deferring Item 3C or C3.
A motion made, properly seconded for adoption of Ways and Means. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, ayes, have it. We are now on to bills up for second reading. There are 15 bills up for second reading. Item M8 is deferred at the request of the applicant. Do I have a motion?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, on Item 5, just since we are into reading all of the titles lately, I noticed that there was a hyphenated blank that was not filled in there. And just for clarification purposes, wanted to ensure that we had that in there as well. Item M5.
Item 5, ordinance. Item five, ordinance.
Madam Clerk.
I'm looking at the ordinance number now.
Just given past um, things that have been brought up, including why we had to read things into uh, the titles and whatnot tonight, I just want to make sure we're dotting all the T, or dotting all the ayes, crossing all the t's, so.
It should be twenty twenty-three, two seventy-seven.
Uh, so I would then move for items one through uh, sixteen, I think it is. Yep, uh, as amended, uh, as the clerk has demonstrated that number for item uh, M five.
Except for item eight.
Exception, yes, correct, except for item eight.
So items one through seven.
And nine through sixteen as amended.
As amended, uh, all, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Number one, Mr. Mayor. I'm still uh, abstaining on that particular.
All right, there's one extension for item one by council member Mitchell.
All right, um, now I'm supposed to ask, shall these ballots pass? The titles thereof be, okay. Um, okay, so we have a motion made.
Second.
Probably seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, with one extension on item one. Okay, we are now on to bills up, uh, first reading. We have only one bill up for first reading in two as item N one is being deferred since the annexation was deferred. Can I get a motion? Motion made properly seconded for N two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Uh, now on to miscellaneous business. We have four items that uh, we'd like, I have uh, legal counsel on, seek legal counsel on in executive session. Um, one is related to a lawsuit with the uh, Board of Field Officers of the Fourth Brigade. Another one is uh, considering the county's counter to us on the purchase and sale of nine ninety-three, nine ninety-five Morrison. Um, third is a Pemberton, um, uh, an update on the Pemberton Park appeal. And the last item is to receive some legal advice uh, as to the purchase of seventy-six Stewart Street. Can I entertain a motion to go into an executive session? Motion made properly seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session, signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Um, we're going to take five minutes, break, meet in my office for, for such.
All right, can I get a motion to come out of executive session? A motion made, probably seconded, to come out of executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes have it. We are out of executive session where no action was taken. We did have a healthy discussion and would open it up to any motions. Councilman Seaking.
I'd like to make a motion relative to the property at 76 Stewart Street. I would move that we as a council authorize our legal counsel to pursue any legal means necessary up to and including eminent domain to take title to the property known as 76 Stewart Street.
A motion made, probably seconded. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. We have another motion. Councilman Appel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that in regards to 993 and 995 Morrison Drive, we authorize you to respond to the county letter of intent with the provision that we be given an additional, you know, a total of 120 day due diligence period to fully vet this deal. We appreciate Charleston County giving us this opportunity to do so.
We have motion made, properly seconded, to accept the county's offer with the condition of changing the due diligence period from 90 to 120 days. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Any further motions? Councilman Bowden.
I will make a motion pursuant to item 01, that we approved the settlement agreement as amended in Board of Field Officers of the Fourth Brigade versus City of Charleston and give the mayor the authority to execute that agreement.
We have motion made, properly seconded. Any further discussion on this? If Councilman Waring, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes have it. No further order of business for this council. This meeting is adjourned.